My brother, my brother was in an oxygen. Child.
Well, welcome to the January 25th, 2018 business meeting. And at this point, I'll turn it over to our county administrator.
Well, good morning, commissioners. We are joined this morning with Kathleen Rastetter, who is representing county council this morning for you. And of course, Kevin Moss, serving as clerk to the board. I'll start with the role. Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gotta miss, there's no comma. All right. With that, we're on to, we're gonna have pretty short meeting today. We have citizen communication. I've got one card, and anyone wanna guess who that is?
Les? I'd never be able to figure it out.
Thank you, Les.
Good morning. Friend of mine looked me up the other day and Googled my name on your website. My name came up over 140 times.
Wow.
And the website went back to 2013. I showed up here in May of 11, and things were rough. Communication was rough. Lot of things changed. We go up and down. I don't need to give everyone a history lesson here, but, you know, here we are years later. Some of the same problems exist. Some things are better. And we're heading into an election, right after we had an oddly timed election. There's a lot of angst out there. Today, I really wanted to ask for a report and talk about transportation, talk about the Sunrise Corridor, how I can help the county. I think we're all definitely partners on that. But I'm not, not in the mood to do that. Some of you may know that Chair Bernard, I use the word attacked, Julie Parrish on Facebook, on the county Facebook page site. And I'm not gonna get into a big, long lecture here, but that's troubling, to say the least. That's out of line. If any of you ever wanna look at anything on my flimsy Facebook page, if anyone in the county wants to request any of my emails, or watch any time I've ever spoken or appeared, I would never conduct myself that way. And if I got full of myself, or I screwed up, or I'd attacked people before, this time I'd stop and do some pretty serious reflecting. And I'd offer a public apology. I would offer a public apology now. In fact, I'd use the last minute of Les Poole's time to do that. Thank you.
Actually, Les, I did send Julie a personal email apologizing for my comments on both the emails I have. Also posted it on Facebook, and you're right, I shouldn't have said that. I basically, you know, anyway, I did apologize. I shouldn't have said what I said. And, and I did post that on Facebook. You said it was a county Facebook page?
Well, the Facebook page that represents you as a commissioner.
Yeah, me personally.
And, you know, it's just really important that, that these attacks end. And folks, I've been attacked by Chair Bernard before, and we'll just end it at that.
Really?
Others have been attacked. You know, it's not cool. It's gotta end. And I do appreciate the apology that you gave. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, we all have, sometimes do things that we wish we hadn't done. I've done it. We've all done it. But I just wanna say I have a lot of respect for Commissioner Bernard. I think he's been a good chair. We certainly have had our issues, but I think this all needs to be put behind us in, in a big way, because it's a kind and compassionate thing to do to a very good person. So I just wanna let you know, I really appreciate working with you. You're a good man. Charlie Brown.
And actually, to really appreciate some of the things that Julie Parrish has done, and that is, she's been a great advocate for vets.
Yeah, she has, yeah.
Along with Martha, have done a lot of great things. And so, sometimes, under the heat of the moment, we do things wrong, and anyone who can tell me they haven't, let me know.
I just said I haven't, and I don't think anyone else here would have. Excuse me for being out of order.
Oh, that's okay. You haven't.
I don't think Sonia would ever do that. I'm just picking out a name. I don't think Paul would ever do that. My time is up.
Okay. Appreciate it. And thank you for coming. I, and I anticipated you would make a comment, and I appreciate it, because I was planning on making a public apology. Anyway, that's the only citizen communication we have, and we'll move on to the consent agenda, since we have no public hearings.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, we have, under Health Housing and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number Two to an Agency Service Contract with Columbia Care Services, Inc. for Supportive Housing Services, approval of Amendment Number One to an Agency Service Contract with Columbia Care Services, Inc. for Residential Treatment Services, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Portland State University for an Economical Impact Analysis, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with North Clackamas School District for Kindergarten Partnership and Innovation Services, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Gladstone School District for Kindergarten Partnership and Innovation Services, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Trail School District for Preschool Promise Services, approval of an Agency Service Contract with Clackamas County Children's Commission for Healthy Families Program Services, approval of Amendment One to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Health Share of Oregon to provide behavioral health services to members enrolled in the Oregon Health Plan, and, under our Human Resources Department, approval of a labor contract between the County of Clackamas and the Clackamas County Federation of Parole and Probation Officers. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Does any commissioner want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda?
I don't wanna say something.
Any none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Sonia, sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, sometimes we run through these consent agendas so quickly that we don't recognize the important work that we're part of. And making sure that we have a better society starts with our youngest children. And this consent agenda has programs for early childhood, for readiness for school, for getting our youth ready to start kindergarten. Really important work, and I just couldn't let it go by without mentioning that part, but happy to approve it.
Ken?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question on the, I think it's the third to the last item, approval of an AG, Agency Service Contract with Clackamas County Children's Commission for Healthy Families Program Services. And it says it's a $1,698,493. It says county general funds are included in the contract amount, but it doesn't specify how much of that 1,600,000 is county general funds. Do you happen to have any idea? I didn't get a chance to call staff and ask.
I will have to follow up on that one for you. I can't tell from the paperwork here how much of that nearly 1.7 million is dedicated general fund money.
I can always make a phone call afterwards, but I thought if you happen to know, I'd ask.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up is the county administrator's update.
Well, thank you. I've got three items to share with you. First, I wanted to take a moment to publicly congratulate our chair, Chair Bernard, who was recently named the Vice Chair of the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, or as we refer to it as RDPO. This group, it's a partnership of government agencies, nonprofits, and private stakeholders throughout the greater Portland area that work to collaborate to increase our region's resiliency to disasters, things like earthquakes, floods, and landslides. Other group members include Multnomah, Washington, Clark, and Columbia Counties, as well as the city of Portland. And I think it's important, this appointment helps to serve, to enhance the county's overall preparedness for disasters, and this is a real priority for us here in Clackamas County. And we, our departments, our county departments are completely devoted to trying to make sure we're ready when the inevitable event can and will happen. So I just wanted to congratulate you on that. I also wanted to share with you a letter that we received, and this is really, it's a really truly heartfelt letter from the mother of a woman who had been incarcerated for some 11 years. And it's, I can't share the entire note, but I just wanted to read to you some of the excerpts, particularly those regarding our Community Solutions Program. So here's what the mother wrote. "I'm writing to share a story of success for my daughter and our family, as well as tremendous hope for so many others. In June, my daughter met Doug Van Zant with Clackamas County's Community Solutions Program. This program aided with finances, clothing, transportation costs, and other things that has helped her get her nursing license back. In short, she has secured a good-paying nursing position, is now working, making a livable wage, and giving back to others in need. Furthermore, every bit as important has been the emotional support and encouragement she received from Mr. Van Zant. Many people coming out of prison don't have the support and encouragement they need to be successful. Making the adjustment to living on the outside and finding adequate employment are some of their biggest obstacles. It's easy to see how Community Solutions helps the person coming out of prison, but the benefits really don't stop there. When parolees are successful, it's like a pebble dropped into the water. Their success ripples out to positively impact so much more: families, the future of their children, the workforce, our communities, and society. The program has made all of the difference for my daughter, and if it continues to exist, it can do the same for others." So I just wanted to thank the individual who sent this thoughtful letter to us, and I also wanted to express my appreciation for the work that Mr. Doug Van Zant, with our Community Solutions Program, has done in assuring and working on her daughter's success. So I have one other item I wanted to share, and you all were given notice of this yesterday, but it's really outstanding news. We received yesterday the latest bond rating from Moody's, and we are currently being upgraded. This is for our general obligation bonds and our full faith and credit obligations. We are being upgraded from AA1 to AAA, and this is the first time in the county's history that we've achieved that kind of, that kind of rating. Of course, what this means is that when we do go out for debt, we'll be more competitive, we'll get better rates. So it will save the citizens money in the long run that we've been able to achieve this. Laurel had sent to you the summary report that they put together on that, and I'll just read you a couple of quick excerpts that helped to explain why. One is, is "Clackamas County's finances will remain healthy with strong reserves that provide ample flexibility, given the stable and predictable property taxes that comprise 61% of operating revenues." And the report speaks to the fact that we've actually doubled our fund balance from 2013 to 2017. I particularly liked what they said here, just to share with you. They say, "Clackamas County's exceptionally strong management..."
All right.
"...is an important driver of their healthy finances and continued stable and experienced management, is a strength in the county's credit profile." And of course, I'm not just saying that's me. I mean, that involves everybody in county administration. It includes you, and it includes our finance and all of our department directors. So I just wanted to share that with you. Good?
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next is Commissioner Communication. We'll start with Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a lot, except I, you stole what I wanted to say, but that's, that's quite all right. Having gone through bonding processes at Clackamas River Water and seeing a bond upgrade like that because of management and governance, it means a lot, and it will save, the taxpayers a great deal of money. You and your staff are to be commended for the work that you have done over the last few years, predating our seating on this board. So thank you very much for that work. It's really appreciated. I did wanna note that Mark's restructuring of some of our debt, that's gonna save us about $2.4 million, is to be commended also. I like the way he stays on top of that and looks for opportunities to save us interest money. So, thank you. I'm gonna go straight to the adoptable dogs. And there we are. "We'd like to promote Clementine again this week. She is an energetic and bold 15-year-old lab mix who's looking for a forever friend to fill his days with love and adventure. Clementine is getting lots of love while she's at the shelter." Here is one of our volunteers reading to her. "However, Clementine would love to find her forever home soon. Please share her information to find her home. For more information about Clementine and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs." And I hope Martha's paying attention.
Noodles lonely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few things to highlight in my work this past week. Issues and concerns that I've been hearing out there. I've been to two legislative forums, one on education, one on business. I attended a Community Health Council meeting, and a couple things that have just been, that I've really been thinking about. Healthcare is so important to our, the stability of our economy, and in meeting with the, with our citizens who volunteer on the Community Health Council, and our conversations about what's important, it became very clear that the mere stress that happens with the threat of losing healthcare hurts the residents that live in Clackamas County. So I can say that we can take a breath of fresh air, or take a sigh of relief in that Measure 101 passed, so that the legislature doesn't have to struggle with trying to figure out how to fill that budget hole. But I just can't, I just wanted to let this, I didn't want this moment to pass without recognizing that we, as our local government officials, recognize the stress that many of our residents face with, in regards to their health and healthcare, and that we are committed to continuing our safe, healthy communities, which mean healthcare for folks. So, as much as that voices. The other issue that has been very prevalent as we, we walk, we walk as commissioners is education, and all that our schools deal with, when they deal with overburdened class sizes, children with mental health issues, families that are facing homelessness. There are so many critical issues that our teachers are somehow expected to manage, and we all know that school funding has been an incredible challenge for years and years and years, and that it's a very important issue. I am looking so forward to continuing our conversation that we started with our superintendents to look at how we can better partner and collaborate with our school districts, so that we can work together. We can't do it alone, schools can't do it alone, we can't do it alone, but together, I think there's many opportunities. And I just wanted to highlight those two things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Gosh, I'm afraid to talk, there's so much. So yesterday, we had a really good meeting with our Regional Solutions Team in this area of the region, and just to remind people what exactly that is, these are regional solution centers, they're places for state agencies to collaborate with each other, local governments, and with other public, private, and civic interests to solve problems and seize opportunities. Basically, we are appointed as an advisory board by the governor, and it's from business, civic organizations, foundations, higher education, and we identify regional priorities that we wanna see happen that will help infrastructure, economic development, really work on equity issues, reuse brownfields, you name it. We have quite the sheet of what our priorities are as we look at projects. And yesterday, we spent time looking at three specific projects for our region, and I can't talk about them yet, 'cause they still have further vetting, but it was a really good meeting, and it was, it's really nice to be part of that particular collaborative model. IMPACT last night was interesting. We actually made a decision to, sorry. It was two hours, but we made a decision, it was glorious. It was like, thank you, thank you. We made a decision. And that is to the Senate, you know, bill, the joint resolution that is out there to change the Constitution to allow us more flexibility in bonding. It is a bipartisan bill, it's broadly supported from both sides of the aisle, and we at IMPACT voted to support it. And I would strongly suspect, I can't speak for my commissioners, that we all support that, because we're grappling with the housing issues. I also wanna thank Mike McAllister. He was at IMPACT with me last night. We're really are having to gear up, because we're coming to decisions dealing with the transportation, regional transportation plan. That decision is kinda coming down the road. A little bit of concern on my part, I'm gonna have to talk to Commissioner Savis about the I-205 corridor, and kinda the sense I have that we, we don't wanna be left in the dust with that. So, you know, that's, that's the news from IMPACT. Other than that, I'm gonna do something a little different today. Sorry, Jim, I'm talking too much. I'm gonna give arts and culture to you, but I've been, I've been having some fun with folks, looking at different words that are kinda fun words. So the word of the day for me is kerfluffle. And kerfluffle is a commotion or fuss, especially one caused by conflicting views. It was first used in Scottish English as early as the 16th century as a verb, meaning to dishevel. The addition of the prefix, possibly derived from a Scottish Gaelic word meaning wrong or awkward, didn't change the meaning of the word considerably. So I'd like to do a word of the week at each of our meetings, because we forget how rich and how wonderful the English language is. And lastly, I'm gonna say, I do appreciate working with all of my colleagues. Julie is a friend of mine, she's always been a friend of mine, but I also believe that, as I said, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna say much, 'cause I've had my own lapses, you know, where, where I have regretted things. So I think we, I think we need to be compassionate and not too hard on each other, really. Okay? I just, I just think this job is so difficult, and we've got so much, you know, we get tomatoes thrown at us all the time. Let's just, let's, let's just get past this and have it be over now. Thank you.
I'm gonna turn this back over to you, you're better at it.
Okay. Sandy Actors Theater presents Rose Colored Glass set in 1938. Chicago, Rose Colored Glass takes place in the back rooms of Lady O'Reilly's Pub. And Rose Fleischmann's Delicatessen. Their disparate worlds, separated by much more than the alley between their kitchens, are about to collide. The show will run January 26 through February 18. Sandy Actors Theater, Fridays, January 26, February 2, 9:16, 7:30. Saturdays, January 27, February, Sundays, February. It's all written there for you guys, okay? Color Out of Gray, an exhibit by Karen Hoffman. The Estacada Arts Commission, the Friends of the Estacada Public Library, and the Estacada Public Library will host a reception to honor the work of Karen Hoffman. Come meet with Karen and view her work, artwork on Thursday, January 11 at 6:00 p.m. The show will be from January 9 through April 11 at the Estacada Public Library. So, for more information about arts, go to clackamasartsalliance.org.
Great. Thank you. Last night, many of us attended the legislative forum hosted by Clackamas County Business Alliance, where our legislators spoke about the various bills they're proposing. One of them had, actually, yeah, one of them had to do with the change in the Constitution, a constitutional amendment created in the 1800s, or 1800s, had to do with the telegraph, which is interesting enough. And that did not allow public-private partnerships. One of the issues that is concerned there is an affordable housing. City of Portland has to own the property in the building, so they can't partner with somebody, do something different. We have the same issue, obviously. We have to own it, and we have a project that we're getting started on that we'll, we'll own a share of, and in the future, own it all, in like 60 years. I'm sure I'll be there for the ribbon cutting. But, you know, one of the problems that we've talked about is that urban renewal is a great tool, but one of the problems with urban renewal is that we've spent a lot of money on affordable housing and created pockets of poverty. I think someone the, the other day mentioned, and then we have pockets of wealth. Instead, we should be able to invest in partnership with other folks, and maybe put different income levels in the same facility. And frankly, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with doing that all over the county. In Lake Oswego, we probably couldn't afford to buy a piece of land to build a building, but some developer might, and we can buy apartments or, you know, in those buildings, where you'd have mixed levels of income, and you'd also have a choice on the school you live in. There's a great opportunity for public-private partnerships. So I believe we've talked about supporting this amendment. If we haven't, I'm pretty sure it's in our, right? Yeah. Also, I went to the, there were a lot of other bills, some which we oppose, others which we support. We have some concerns about the Aurora Airport, and, and one of those is, there needs to be a land use process. Skirting land use processes to do something for one particular business is, is wrong, and we need to follow the process. The other is, I went to the graduation of six people in our ASAP program, which, which means Correction Substance Abuse Program. Amazing stories. I think the first thing you notice is that every social, every level of society, rich folks, Christian families, and many others, all have this problem of drug abuse. And many of the people graduating were 14, 15 years, they'd lost everything, and they were given options of going to prison, or going to this program, which is not easy. 18 months, two and a half years, some of the time, some of these folks spent, not only once, but maybe twice. But I was just really inspired by these people, can turn their lives around, get their families back, and start fresh, and, and the commitment on their part to continue on that path is amazing. Judge Steele, it was her last graduation program, because she'll become the presiding judge at the courthouse. Great choice, and I'm sure she'll do a great job, and then it's been, of course, turned over to some- Great choice, and I'm sure she'll do a great job. And then it's, of course, turned over to somebody else, another judge to move forward on this program. We're really excited about that. Other than that, one of Mary Rathke is on vacation in Hawaii on her birthday, and I guess we'll all have to eat the cake. There isn't any, really. And thank Kevin for stepping in, but I'm glad she could be there. We also met with PGE today, the new president of PGE, Maria Pope. Talked about a bill being considered, carbon reduction bill. Her concerns about double, if we charge PGE a fee, which will be passed on in the utility bill, which could mean, if the average is $100, it could be $120. And we're concerned about affordability. We need to talk about, you know, we need to talk some about that bill. I haven't really had a chance to look at it yet. So it is something we need to address. I think she had some good points. We hear all the time about, you know, I'm getting priced out of my home. And also, in 2020, PGE's only coal-fired power plant will be converted to natural gas. And that's a good move. And so that cost of doing that, of course, is passed on to the ratepayers. So we've got to be cautious about how we move forward. And with that, I hope everybody has a great weekend, and thank you for coming, and we're adjourned.